Under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Elizabeth, would you like to roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mayor McFadden.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Shaw. Trustee Gluck.
Present.
Trustee Casker.
Present.
Trustee McHugh. Deputy. Sorry, trustee McHugh is here? Deputy Mayor Shaw?
You're, she's here, but she's muted.
Okay, so I'll check her.
I have a visual on that.
Okay, and trustee McHugh, I'm sorry, I don't see him here.
No, I don't see him yet.
Okay, so I will mark him out in attendance.
Yeah, alright, so, look, before we start the meeting, I just want to thank Paul Gluck and Alan McHugh again. Can't thank them enough. They've just been terrific over the last four and five years. They've worked very hard and accomplished numerous things for the village. They each brought unique skill sets to the table. It won't be easy to fill their shoes. At the same time, I want to congratulate the new trustees. And that would be Josh Shearer and Paul Brooke and also Judge David Hassan. I'm looking forward to working with all of you and accomplishing good things for the village. And so I don't know if anybody wanted to say something before we move into the agenda? Okay, alright, now, we have the reports in minutes. Did any of the trustees have any questions about the reports or minutes?
None for me.
Okay. Now, we have public comments. Before I start the public comment section, there is one thing I forgot to put on the agenda. And that is a request by the Weewa Beach Club to add people to the their membership list from the hamlet who were not on either the 2019 or 2020 lists. And for everyone involved in the college, remind everyone that we had agreed to approve the 2019 list. And I distributed that information to everyone. And I was just wondering if we want to discuss that in new business? And I'm mentioning it now in case there's any comments that the audience may have about that matter. So, is that a is that a yes, guys? We'll put it on the new business list?
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone have any questions about the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Well, I think before we, before we get there, though, I don't know whether are we, this sort of a I guess this would go in public comments. Michelle Lindsay had asked me to bring to the attention of the board and the audience a couple of items. One is the Tuxedo Art and Music Event that's scheduled for this Friday. 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Tuxedo Train Station. We have a number of very talented local artists who have been painting away. Will be painting away from today through Friday, various landscape and historical and architectural sites throughout Tuxedo. And you'll be able to meet the artists and, and purchase their wares if you're so inclined at the Tuxedo Train Station Friday 6:00 PM. A little bit less fun, more mundane. There is a meeting of the Tuxedo Local Development Corporation scheduled for June 24th, 10:00 AM. That will deal with I mean, the relevance to people in the village are, it will address village residents who happen to be on the Tuxedo Hamlet Sewer System. So that will be of interest to any residents who are working, you know, who have their sewer serviced by the, by the town hamlet system.
Oh, you know what that's in reference to?
I'm sorry?
Do you know what that meeting is about?
Yes, as you know, there, there are a number of village residents who are serviced by the Town of Tuxedo Hamlet Sewer System. Been in a, in a state of terrible disrepair for a number of years. That is transitioning to the sewer system that is operated by, that was designed to operate for, for Tuxedo Farms. They are in the process of, even though Tuxedo Farms is not yet up and, and running, utilizing that, that sewer system, we're transitioning to utilize that sewer system for people in the hamlet and for people in the village who were serviced by, by that, you know, by that system. So if you've if you're a village resident and you're on that system, you may very well want to tune in and, and hear what's going on because it will, it will, it will impact you.
Do you know if we're going to lose any customers?
If we will lose customers?
Are we going to lose people that have sewer connections to the system now? Or is this strictly those that are independent of our system currently?
I don't, I don't, I don't see how people would be able to move from one system to the other. You know, the, the pipes are there and they're, they're servicing where they're servicing and it's kind of, you know, geographically you know, mandated depending on, you know, where gravity flows. So it's really just a matter of moving from the, from the dilapidated old hamlet system onto what will be the new system. And, you know, figuring out how that will impact, you know, both hamlet residents and village residents.
Thank you.
And lastly, sorry, lastly, it's just, as questions always arise, she asked me to reiterate that the supervisor, English, is in discussions with related and other parties about Tuxedo Farms and moving forward with some, with some variation on that project. So those discussions are, are continuing and ongoing.
Can you elaborate more on that, please?
I can't.
To your knowledge?
I, I can't, but feel free to, you know, to reach out to supervisor.
Well, that's a real big teaser you've thrown out there. Okay, you said for, I think you said for some other configuration? Or is it the same use? I wasn't sure what you just said.
Oh, with relating to Tuxedo Farms? Relating to Tuxedo Farms or the sewer system?
The Tuxedo Farms. You said that he's in discussion with Tuxedo Farms?
I mean, I am not really, you know, a party or privy to those discussions, but from my understanding, there is there's been discussions about some, you know, some other, you know, configuration for that project going forward. You know, time has marched on and probably the way it was originally proposed is no longer, you know, a workable or appropriate configuration. So I believe the town and, and related are in discussions about what, you know, what some other variation would look like that would suit both the, you know, the growth needs of the town and be attractive to a developer.
Yeah, I mean, this is a debate. I'll have to give him a call right away. I, you know, this obviously concerned Tuxedo greatly. And I haven't heard about this before until this little announcement here. I think that this is a real eyebrow raiser. I don't know what direction they're going in or even what, how this would affect the village. Are there going to be additional planning board requirements, secret requirements, you know, change to the, to the density? Change to the, to the zoning? These are all critical issues that I will commit to everyone on this call. And moving forward, I will find out the information and I'll make a report to the, to the extent that I can. Tinka, maybe you want to help me do that? And I see Paul just jumped on the call. Paul, we're talking about an announcement that just came out of the town that the supervisor is working with related to change potentially the configuration of things. And it's very vague. But it sounds very important to me.
Well, Mayor, Mayor, I think that's, I think that's been, that's been in the public arena for some time. There's been, you know, certainly at town board meetings, there's been announcements of discussions ongoing with related about, about how to move forward, you know, with the project in some, in some configuration. So that's, you know, that, that has, that has been out there. I don't think there's anything new other than just a reaffirmation that those the discussions and conversations are taking place and they are continuing.
Brian, do you know anything about it?
No, I do not.
Hey, Brian, quick question. If they were going to change any of the subdivision layouts, that would have to go in front of a public hearing, correct? For site plan approval?
Yeah, that's correct. It would be an amended site plan approval or unless it's a new one, either way, it would go before the planning board.
Right, and, and there'd be a public hearing. So I don't know if we need to make assumptions over what's going on until it actually is arisen as a formal application or change.
Yeah, no, I'll keep my commitment to find out what's going on. I'd rather know what I can before it goes to a public hearing. But I appreciate that.
My point is nothing, nothing is certain until it's actually put on paper and, and presented to a public body. So it may just be a waste.
Call it my, my curiosity. Okay, so does anyone have anything to discuss about the consent agenda?
I had a question on the, what was it? Wasn't there something for the Weewa Beach Club?
Yeah, there's three things on the consent agenda for the Weewa Beach Club. And then I added one more that we're going to discuss in new business, which is the addition, the request for the additional membership.
Right. So I just had a question on the playset. I mean, the photograph that we received, it looked like a residential unit. Would that be approved for a public use like that?
If I could just jump in, just as a matter of procedure, if we're going to discuss the resolution, maybe just ask if any resolutions that the board members would like to take outside of the consent agenda.
Right.
Then you can do the consent agenda and then deal with that one separately.
Right, that's a great idea. So does anyone have any items on the consent agenda they'd like to take out because they would like to discuss it?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss I, the playset.
So.
Okay, so we can do that. And how about any of the others?
Yeah, Paul, you have the question on the, the Police Department Rules and Regulations, right? Paul?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Oh, I have, I have a number of questions on consent agenda.
Okay, so.
So do you have items you'd like to take out?
I guess the first question is relates to resolutions because we, I don't see, I didn't see resolutions for most of these. Are we, are we sort of adopting the agenda items as the expression of the resolution?
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past. Did you see the list of resolutions?
I saw a, I don't think I saw a list of resolutions.
Yes.
Only two.
Pardon?
I think there's only two.
On the, on the consent agenda.
Yeah, the consent agenda.
All right. Have we seen the engagement letter from Cooper's?
Yes.
We have.
Yeah, it was distributed.
I think Elizabeth sent that out.
Yes, correct.
Okay, I don't remember seeing that, but that's fine. With respect to the police rules and regulations, as I mentioned earlier, I haven't had a, an opportunity to review those and they were just placed on the agenda this morning. So I would abstain from those. So they would, to avoid the need to vote no on the, or abstain from the entire consent agenda, I would ask that moved out separately.
I, I think Chief, you distributed that a while back, didn't you?
Yeah. Yes, the chief.
I distributed it. I distributed that at the last board meeting.
Right.
That evening, sent it out to you.
At the last board meeting, it was distributed.
That's correct. And it was put on the agenda, I believe, this morning and wasn't on the previous agenda. So for that reason, I apologize. I didn't have the opportunity since this morning to.
I understand. No problem.
Quite extensive. So the only question I would have there, Brian, have, have you reviewed those?
I don't, I mean, I've reviewed the regulations in general. I don't know if there were any changes made, so I can't say I've seen the latest draft per review. You can always, if the board wanted to approve them, approve them subject to review by our office, if that was the preference.
Chief, did you send them over to Brian?
I did not.
Okay.
But I can do so.
Okay, well, let's table it. We'll table it. No problem. Let's see. Go ahead, Paul.
I think that was it. Oh, other than the I believe we have a previously approved, the interceptor financing item M.
That's something you put on there, Elizabeth. Do you want to address that?
Um, that, I, I followed up with Robin to find out where we were in the whole process of getting this, it relates to the bespoke vehicle. And she sent that to me and said it has to be approved by the board and signed off. So that's why I added it to the agenda. I didn't actually think it specifically, I like, I know we started talking about this in previous meetings, but I think it has evolved over time. And I think this has new issues in it. I'm not understanding it completely. I'm sorry about that. That's the best I can do for you.
We're, we'll table it.
But we, I don't need to, you know, we, we have to make a decision about it.
I'll reach, I'll reach out to her tomorrow.
Okay.
And then if I have to, I'll call a special meeting. But we'll table that one.
And, and I'm sorry, though, the last one is, is item N. Because I believe that relates to the dash harvesting contract. I believe that contract has already been approved. And I'm not so if it's been approved, I don't think we need to re-approve it unless we're.
Did I sign that anyway? Paul? Oh, I think I went into the village office and signed that, right?
I think you did, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we'll take that out. Thank you. Anything else?
The rules?
That'll do it for you?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Chris?
I'm good.
Tinka?
Just the, the one that I mentioned, I.
Okay, so help me out here. I'm going to try and catch all of these letters.
Um. Yeah, Mayor, it's going to be table L as in Lincoln, M as in Mary, remove I, and, and as in Nancy from the consent.
Okay, thank you. So, so Brian, I'm going to read the motion and I'll, and then you can repeat that. And I'll accept that. And then we'll, we'll discuss and vote. Be it resolved that Board of Trustees approved the consent agenda, item number seven, in the following letters. Brian?
Okay, so then it'll be A through K. And then that's it, A through K would be on the consent agenda.
Minus I.
I, minus I.
I'm sorry, minus I.
And L, L?
Minus.
Well, that was, that's after K.
Yes, so.
So it's A through K with the exception of I, which is removed.
Okay. Everyone good with that? Any discussion? Oh, let me have a second, please.
I'll second it. Chris?
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Excellent. Okay, so let's, let's tackle the, yours, Tinka.
If I could just suggest that we should just make a motion to table separately L and M.
Okay, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees table L and M. Item seven on the consent agenda.
I'll second it, Chris.
It's actually three things. Well, it, it doesn't have a letter in front of it, the Police Department Rules and Regulations. So maybe we call that the invisible letter?
Yeah, and the, and the police.
Okay, yeah.
Rules. Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, it should be O, right?
Well, that's before the M, but.
Yeah, you can make it O and just consider it moved down. So in that case, we'll table LM and O, which will be the Police Department Regulations.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. I don't believe it is an attempt to table L, which is the penalty charges on water account number 263.
That's correct.
You are correct.
All right, sorry. So I was looking L as the police regulation. So in that case, it's just M and O. M as in Mary and O would be tabled.
Accept it. Let me have another second, please.
I'll second it.
Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. Any nays? Okay. All right, so let's go to the public comments.
Do we want to talk about the swing set?
Uh.
Trustee Shaw was going to address I, I believe, resolution.
Okay, Tinka, go ahead with the swing set.
My only question on that is, I mean, the photographs look like it was a residential playset. I didn't know if, you know, they had looked into whether that was acceptable by their insurance or acceptable to have a residential playset used in, in a more public format. That's my only question there.
So if I can just add, I, I think there's regulations that cover parks and our duties and responsibilities as far as inspections. So my suggestion is that if the code enforcement slash building inspector agrees that this is suitable, we, we lived up to his judgment. And if he says, hey, this isn't appropriate for 15 kids a week to be on, then, you know, he says no, it's just approved, just like you would for any other type of safety issue on somebody's house.
Yeah, and, and I did put that into the agenda item. I think that's the best way to go. It, it says in the consent agenda that it has to be approved by the building inspector.
Yeah, and then, because then trustee Shaw, I think that addresses your concern as far as safety of the public. Because we have a truly bona fide inspector looking.
And he'll also check the insurance as well.
Okay.
Okay, so do we want to approve that? Or vote on that? Excuse me?
Sure.
Okay.
Aye.
Let me pull up the information. Oh, okay. Let me go to the agenda. Okay, number I, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize the Weewa Beach Club to replace a playset at the Weewa Park at the approval of the building inspector and at their expense. May I have a second?
I'll second it. It's Chris.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Paul and Tinka?
I was an I.
Tika?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Did we take anything else out here?
Just, I think just letter N as in Nancy. I'm not sure that needs to be tabled because you're indicating that it was already done. So maybe just withdraw it from the agenda.
Oh, so we haven't done that one yet either? Okay.
Well, N was the one that trustee Gluck indicated was already taking care of the harvesting contract.
Just for clarity there, and then so the contract is signed. The two open items on it are if we want, you know, subject to the recommendation of our lakes consultant to have a full additional dash harvesting service, we have to schedule that with the, with the dash harvester and and we also have to schedule upon three dash harvesting of three days, you know, at some point with the, with the harvest.
Okay, so be it resolved that the Board of Trustees remove item N from the agenda item seven, consent agenda. Remove that, please. May I have a second?
This is Chris. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, Tinka?
Yeah, that was an I too.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Anything else before we go to public comments?
Do we do public comment? Yeah, okay.
Okay, public comments are open. Another minute. Okay, public comment section is closed. Why don't we move on? Okay, so does anyone have any old business to add? New business, we have the request by the Weewa Beach Club to extend the membership list beyond the agreed upon 2019 and 2020 memberships. And I sent out that information to everyone. And before I read that, do we want to discuss that? Chris, Paul, Tinka?
I, I don't have any objections to what they just came up. If their board agreed to it, then I don't.
I disagree. I think that's picking and choosing and kind of discriminatory. And if you let those people in, you have to let everyone in. So I completely disagreed with that. I think we should stick to what we had before and.
Uh. Chris, do you want to respond or you, you're just?
I, we disagree.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Tinka. You know, we had a, had a very, we had an extensive and lengthy multiple discussions about about membership under Weewa Beach Club and, and whether, whether to open the North Gate or require the North Gate based on certain levels of membership and what we were going to do. And it will consume multiple meetings. And it's a little, it's a little disappointing, I guess, to see this revisited so shortly after we had, you know, completed that, completed that agreement. You know, I'm, in one sense, happy to, you know, to have a, a more open membership, but we, 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 you know, we sort of reached a resolution of this with, with lots of input from lots of people in the village and it achieved a, you know, a certain balance. So no, no disrespect intended to anybody who is, you know, on the list of prospective memberships or anybody else. It's kind of where it wound up.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Uh, I, I agree also with, with you, Paul and Tinka. I was for the 2020 list and it went to the 2019 list. And I'm also obviously still in support of the North Gate for safety reasons. So I would be inclined to say no as well. And Tinka's point, yes, there is no assurance that this won't come up again. And how would we manage that if every couple of months, there's new members that are going to be added? So that, that's my position as well. Do we have anyone here from the Weewa Beach Club that would like to comment? In terms of being trans. In terms of being transparent here and open?
Good evening, Mayor, this is Mark Citron.
Hi, Mark, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Jennifer Steiner was intending to be present tonight, but she's unable to appear until about 8:00 PM. With respect to, to our position, we, we understand that the negotiations were extensive, that we were able to reach an agreement as to the operation of the club this year. And everyone, while there was some dissatisfaction expressed by various members of the board, we're pleased that we were able to operate, and we believe, at least through the first two or three weekends, things have worked well. We appreciate the board approving our expenditures for improvements to the Beach Club, because as you know, Mayor, this was one of your primary concerns when you brought up the issue of the proposal, you thought the Beach Club required improving, and here we are making the improvements, at least some of the improvements that you had suggested. As far as the issue of the new town members is concerned, we really see it from our perspective, you know, as, as one of, of comedy between the the village and the town, and it would go a long way towards that particular point. I understand Paul's reservations with respect to that, but we, we feel that to accommodate an additional eight members would not be an overreach by the club, and since we had initially proposed that we go back farther than 2019 to allow members to renew who were members prior to 2019, we don't believe that this particular proposal is be beyond the pale, so to speak. Comments that were made that this proposal will not pass this evening, we would certainly like to continue the discussions when we meet with the deputy mayor and her committee to discuss the future of, of the Beach Club through next year and beyond that.
Just one comment, thank you, Mark, just one comment on that committee. We, we haven't established a committee at this point in time yet with the deputy mayor in charge. Just to, to clear the record there. That may happen with, with Tinka or maybe another member.
We're prepared to meet whenever you or any of your design.
Terrific, terrific. Okay, so Brian, a question to you, if you don't mind. You were obviously intimately involved in the agreement, is there an issue if, if we were to fix this as, you know, the last number of people that could be added, or is there any discrimination?
I think.
Future members?
Goes to, to, I think, the type, you know, so to speak of, so I'm not sure, are we talking about just the increase in, in town residents, is that?
Yeah, the Hamlet residents, so basically, I think, if I may speak for you, Tink, since we've all agreed. I think the issue is that if we approve eight or nine people tonight, with a group of 10 people that wanted to join from the 2005 list, next month have a case of, of why they wouldn't be allowed in.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, like, if you're setting a number, you know, how you get there, look, I, I don't know, the type of discrimination you're talking about is not really a category of discrimination, it's, it's based on a year when you were a member of a club, so it's not really a protected class or anything. So I think the village has it within its power to set a number for these categories of membership, and, you know, then the question is, how do you get there? I guess maybe discrimination might not be the best choice of the word, but more is it arbitrary, you know, and how you're deciding which members come in, and that's a matter of, you know, the village deciding, if you said we're going to go back to 2019 and you know, that's the cutoff, I can't say that's irrational or unreasonable, as opposed to going back 10 years and saying, you know, a member that was a, a member in 2010 or 11 should come in. I think it's, you know, reasonable to say, if you remember when the last X number of years from 2021 moving back, and you want to increase that number and allowance, I don't think it would be successfully challenged.
Okay, I, I recommend that, considering everything we've heard, we, we can vote, and if it's a vote that is not favorable, certainly, the Wee Wa Beach Club can, can bring it back to us if they want at a future time. How's that suit everybody?
I'm ready.
About it, I think we're just, what we had.
Okay. All right, so be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve additional memberships to the Wee Wa Beach Club, as for Jennifer's email that was distributed to the Wee Wa Beach Club this season from the two, predating the 2019 list. May I have a second?
This is Chris.
All in favor?
I.
No?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did, did everyone on that list, item of discussion, if I may, with everyone on that list from a pri- air membership?
I think one is a new found.
Oh.
Play in, and and play with all the kids that live right next door, right across the street, something like that, and they can go to the the Beach Club, but they can't go with their friends because they're not members and they're new.
Thank you. So, Chris is a yes. I'm a no. Tinka? No. Paul? Okay. Mark, you're welcome to come back to us with it, there's a new board coming on board and what could happen there, so you're welcome to come back. You're welcome. Okay, now, any other new business items?
Mayor, I got one. The chief had sent a note about a one-way sign on Clubhouse.
Yes, I tabled all of those because I met with the chief last, what, Friday or something, chief, can't remember, and we drove around in the patrol car and went up both roads and went the wrong way on the one-way, had a in-depth discussion about it, and since it's Clubhouse Road and it also involves signage at the racetrack, table it, I, you didn't get back to me on a meeting with Christopher Dowd, if you had that meeting, I'd love to hear about it.
Not yet.
So I thought it was best to table the next meeting?
Okay.
If that's okay?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. And also, if you want some assistance, I'm happy to help you with the meeting with Chris, and, and I'll share with you. We discussed a variety of different ways to deal with it. The, the, one of the things that's unfortunate is that some of these band drivers specifically take a risk, calculated risk that they won't get caught, and they go the wrong way on purpose, right, chief? And it, it's sort of like a, you know, let's, let's run across the meadow before we get caught, because otherwise they have to go way around, so we were even discussing the idea of making it two-way again, and, and I'm not trying to freak anybody out, because obviously we wouldn't do that without a public hearing, but you know, it's, there's a lot to consider, I think.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to, yeah, have a bigger conversation about that whole intersection, and you had mentioned something about you know, the entrance to the racetrack too.
Right.
I think there's a lot, I think we accomplished a lot there.
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, absolutely, the, I, I went over to the other parking area, and it's a beautiful entrance there.
Right.
And, you know, I could understand having a place to access the racetrack for, you know, landscaping trucks and even a fire truck if necessary, and what you can't do from the, from the secondary entrance, but, you know, moving that gate up, and there, there's other ways, maybe, that, that become, can become more picturesque. And, okay, great, I'm glad you're into that.
And Mayor, if I could just jump in on that issue, if the village is going to review, you know, one-ways or signage or parking, obviously, you, as you touched on, you know, the public hearing, you have chapter 94. My suggestion would be, if you think changes are, are need to be made, and with discussions with the chief, to propose it in, in one local law, so that you can amend chapter 94 and address any issues, whether it be one-way streets, parking, and then amend that chapter in one shot, one public hearing, and you'd do all of that, you know, rather than piecemeal.
Perfect, okay. Are you familiar, Brian, with our gateway overlay district law?
Yeah, I know you have a gateway overlay coming into the village.
Yep. Okay, Tink, I know you were involved in that, so was I years and years ago. Okay, so any other new business? Okay, so what I'm going to do is recommend that we go into executive session. Before I do that, does anyone have any comment, any of the trustees? Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees leave the public meeting to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing an employment, the particular person, the DPW contract negotiation, and several water and sewer customers. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you, eyes have, no nays. Okay, so take us, take us in, Elizabeth, please. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorized the mayor to offer two settlements to, to water customers discussed in the executive session, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Okay, thanks. Elizabeth, Chris seconded the resolution to come back from executive session, I made it. And Tinka just seconded that last one. Okay, before we adjourn, does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss or add?
I just want to thank Paul for his service, learned a lot this year, he was definitely thorough and detailed, and I, I miss him.
Thank you. It's been, it's been a pleasure, but I'm, I'm still around.
And trustee Gluck, thank, thank you for
Just don't become a public advocate.
We're going to miss trustee Gluck's, you know, on-the-fly resolutions that he.
I know.
Handled so many times.
I think. Resolution and adopt that.
All right, anything else, guys? Okay, I move to adjourn the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Adjourn, thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Bye-bye.